So this is Sarah Wolf calling to order the virtual January 12th meeting of the Manchester Essex Regional School Committee. Welcome to everyone who's joining us tonight and thank you to 1623 Studios for record. Well, we recorded the meeting, but thank you for posting it for us. And we will begin with public comment. Just a reminder to limit your comments to three minutes. And if you would like to make a comment, please put your name and address in the chat. We don't have a ton of people here right now. Is there anyone calling on the phone who would like to make a comment by phone? And it appears that we have no public comment in the chat. So perhaps we have no public comment tonight. All right. So we will begin with our student report. And I saw that Lucas Chan was one of the first people on the meeting tonight. Lucas, take it away.
All right. So overall, not much has really happened since last week's meeting. But just, you know, in terms of this week, we have our two in-person half days, which are Thursday and Friday. And then next week, we'll be transitioning into the hybrid model. So, you know, it's going to be interesting to see how that all plays out for students and teachers. And I think, like I said at last week's meeting, I'll be sure to talk in with some of my peers to get some like feedback on their experience. But yeah, for now, I think that's everything. Yep.
Okay, great. Thank you. Actually, I just heard that Nina McKinnon would like to make a comment by phone. So Nina, would you like to unmute yourself and make your comment? I can see Nina there, but I can't hear you, Nina. Are you trying to comment? Okay, I think maybe you were having, she says she's trying to comment.
Let me take a quick look and see if I can help her with unmuting. Do you know her number, what caller number she is, or is her name?
Her caller number should be, she says she can hear us all. Nina, can you talk?
Heather just keeps saying test, now I'll unmute the caller.
She tries to find you. It's an 0595 number.
I've just got the miss caller user, call-in user. Everyone's muted, so she will have to.
If everyone can lend a hand, I'm going to unmute all and we'll see if we can hear her.
So I've unmuted those that I can control.
Okay, Nina, we've unmuted everybody we can control. Can you say test, test, and see if we can hear you?
Or attempt to unmute yourself.
Or unmute yourself with your own device? Wait, she's trying to send me a personal text. She says she can try again to call.
Sure.
Sure, sure. Go ahead. Try again to call. Okay, so I think there's a new call in user eight. Do you want to try unmuting that one and see if that's her?
Yeah, I can't control the mute. I can, I'm requesting that that individual unmute. So if they got a signal, they should just open up their line.
Okay. We'll give it another minute.
Is there anything we can do while we're waiting?
Uh, yeah.
Hi, Sarah, can you hear me?
Oh, yes, we can hear you. There you are, Nina.
I'm so sorry. Hey, everyone, I'm so sorry. I apologize. So the only two comments I had, and I did check because the minutes for the draft for December 15th aren't listed, but are two things. One is on this idea of the pre-COVID testing, or however it's referred to with Ginkgo, that I would ask that the school committee really does look at what the costs are. It does seem that it's between $55,000 to $65,000. And because MERC is not a closed community, this, it's not going to be a controlled environment the way colleges and other institutions are doing it. As to whether or not the school committee has asked if Hamilton, Wenham, Ipswich, Beverly, Gloucester, those schools that have been in hybrid for a period of time, you know, if they're doing any of it. In addition, just because it's a contract and because kids are not required to do it, I guess I would just say that concern of paying for something that we don't even know how many will actually use, and it's just a very high cost. So that was one comment. And then the only other, and I do appreciate, because I can see updates were made to the calendar, is just that there really is that effort that on the sort of the school pages, you know, I know in merc.com, we have the district page, then each school has a page on the dates to remember. Everything should be listed. It should be whether it's for the high school, the PSATs, that there's, you know, there's no onsite school that day. Like, things really need to be in one place. There are a lot of emails that come through. And so I know in the middle school, there's a little bit back and forth to finally, you know, have some of it updated. But it should be something, I would hope, that could be done weekly. Because it's just great for, you know, for all of us, including them students, but for the parents, especially working parents, they'll have one place to look at and as a calendar to see it, not have to search through emails.
Okay. Thank you for your comments, Nina.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Appreciate the patience.
Yep. Okay. So moving on, and we got our student report, so Chairman's report. It's here. "As we move into the new year, we are hearing that many students are very excited to get back to in-person school. Our middle and high school students are on track to phase into the hybrid model beginning next week. And of course, our elementary school students have resumed the hybrid model that they started back in October. We have a few elementary school parents asking when we will be able to provide more in-person time for our younger students. And last week, we did request that our administration begin to put together a plan for when that might happen. At the same time, some of our middle and high school teachers have expressed concern about the safety of reentry. Today, the school committee received an unsigned letter from a group of teachers urging us to hold on opening the middle high school until after the teachers have received their vaccines. This letter will be included in the public record for tonight's meeting. These are certainly difficult times, and we continue to work together collaboratively to ensure that everyone feels as comfortable as possible returning to an in-person school during this pandemic. We know that it hasn't been easy for our amazing students, their very patient parents, or our hard-working teachers. We applaud everyone's efforts in working together to provide the best possible educational experience for our children. Thank you all for your continued participation during these challenging times, for attending our meetings, and for listening with an open mind to all points of view. The main focus of our meeting tonight will be on the budget, and I encourage you all to stay with us for that discussion." And moving along, because we do have a lot to talk about, do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Can I amend the consent agenda to include the minutes of 1:5?
Yes, you may.
Thank you.
I will move to accept the consent agenda with corrections that I've already sent to you on the meeting minutes for 12:15.
Okay.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion on the consent agenda?
No, but could we re-mute all? Is that?
Pam, could you please re-mute all of the people who are in your control? And if you are listening to this, can you please check to make sure that your own? She muted me too. Okay.
And I just want to say that's voucher 1028 for the minutes.
Okay, very good. So it's voucher 1028. There's no discussion on the consent agenda. We have to vote to accept it in roll call. Eric, are you a yes?
Yes.
Great. Annie?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Matt had a meeting, so I don't think Matt is on with us yet. Teresa?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. So the consent agenda passes. And do we have any subcommittee reports tonight? I think we're freshly back still from winter break, so we haven't had a lot of meetings yet. And we can then move right into the superintendent's report.
I'm just going to throw in, I think we're going to have a collaboration meeting maybe this Friday. Pam, did we?
That's the goal. Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Excellent. Excellent. And we will also be meeting, negotiations will be meeting with the MEDA leadership on Thursday.
And I was going to say that we're meeting with FinCom in Manchester tomorrow night so we can solidify our morning meeting time for Friday at that point, because we'll have all the necessary people there.
Thank you. I forgot about that.
No problem. Do you want me to jump in, Sarah, and keep moving?
Yeah, I think that's great.
I'll be quick, because my report's going to be a little bit redundant from last week because we previewed most of what was coming up in January at that point. So just a quick check on what's going on around the schools. Elementary hybrid, we're continuing forward with that. We've been very fortunate. We haven't had any substantial time break other than planned vacations since we started. Again, some targeted remote learning situations, but they have been few and far between. Principals are doing excellent job of managing staff and making sure students don't lose their in-person days. Couple of things to keep in mind, and one thing to keep in mind and one piece of good news. So January 25th is parent conferences. It's going to run as an asynchronous day for students, so it will both be a day counted toward the school year and an opportunity for parents to connect with teachers. Elementary parents and middle school parents as well should look for information from their principals coming out on how that day will be structured. And then I know they're, the team is starting to look at assessment data from the first trimester. And I think, all I think, I know Jennifer has reported, and I believe John has reported as well, that they're not seeing in the data widespread learning loss since last spring. I'm sure that there are students who need interventions and need some remediation, but I think there was a concern that it was going to be an extensive learning loss, but they aren't seeing evidence of that. So I'm sure we'll hear more. We're working on scheduling the elementary hybrid update for our January 26th meeting. At middle high school, they did the first of four in-person orientation days today. Tip of the hat to Joanne and the entire middle school team. It looked pretty seamless up there. I know it was a lot of work. So between Joanne, the facilities team, and the staff, it looked like it was a really successful day. Winter athletics is in progress. I think there was another game streaming this evening. So that's, that's moving along quite nicely. Middle high school hybrid officially starts next Tuesday, along with the regular busing schedule. I think information, confirmations will be coming out on the next day or two to families out of central office on what the bus routes will be. And I think Nina mentioned it earlier. I know Tricia has sent direct messaging to parents at the high school that PSATs, they had really good turnout for people, for students who wanted to participate. We have so many students, in fact, that they're going to move 126 to remote day so we can accommodate all students who need to take, be in person to take the test on that day. So the specifics will come out from Tricia directly to the high school parents. So for non-test takers, they'll be working remotely. For kids taking the test, they'll be in school on that day. COVID conditions, not monitoring, but monitoring. We continue to monitor the COVID conditions, having regular meetings and check-ins with the Board of Health reps. We give them a call every week after the data post just to make sure our interpretation jives. And they continue to reassure us that the conditions within the two towns support us returning to school and that are, what we should be keeping an eye on is spread within the schools, which we have had no evidence of until this point. We talked about that at length last week. Surveillance testing, that's evolving, again, to Nina's point. I think we'll see many more schools moving in this direction. The Department of Ed sent out their outline for their testing initiative. So it will be launched within the next two weeks. I do think we're a solid candidate. So we're rethinking our process just a little bit. We have a meeting tomorrow with the health professionals to discuss it. They're going to offer an introductory six-week free period with a $5 per head cost after that. So I do think will be accepted into the initial program. I know this, this group gave us the go-ahead to pursue the testing. I think what we're finding out is we were working on some liability and consent language that we wanted to have in place. In the process of doing that, the DESC has already included that in their package to schools. So essentially, what they're doing is they're facilitating all schools who want or need to do testing to be able to afford it and do it with some structured supports from the Department of Ed. So I think we will be able to implement in January. I'm going to talk with our group and get their opinion on it, but I wouldn't be surprised to say we are going to go forward with the DESC model. So stay tuned. We'll be meeting again in two weeks, so we'll have an update on that. If there's one to give in the interim, I'll make sure to get that to you. And then the COVID-19 vaccine, just an FYI, school nurses are in tier one. We provided, the towns reached out to us, we provided the document to them, which is going to allow all of our school building nurses to go ahead and get the vaccine, along with the first responders. We're also investigating whether or not some of our staff members who work one-on-one with students and have responsibility for actual physical interaction, things like toileting and assistance throughout the building, we believe also will qualify in this tier one group. So we hope to get them in, in the next week or two as well. And then K-12 educators in general, we are tier two, group two. So hopefully, late February is when we will be in line for the vaccine. What we don't know is all of the how and why. How it will happen, where it will, not how and why, how and where we will be getting those vaccines. So I think that's good news, making us feel a little optimistic of what the next couple of months will bring. And then very quickly, we had a question about MCAS last week. Tricia did a great job of explaining that the key change at the high school level is the modification to the competency determination for class of 21, which means they aren't on the hook to take and pass the test if they haven't up to this point. So they're making some accommodations for them. And then I think the one that's going to impact us the most, it's the shortened testing window for grades three to eight. We had a brief meeting with the commissioner earlier this week, and he's pretty committed to using, along with the Board of Ed, is committed to using the MCAS as a diagnostic test. I think there's some controversy on whether or not it's actually designed to do that. But the intent is to utilize the MCAS this year to assess where students are across the state. And I think they're, from what I can understand, they are locking into MCAS as the option because it is the one standardized thing that every school does. So it gives you a common measure across schools. So I'm sure we'll be getting more information on how that will be implemented. And something that really doesn't impact us, the commissioner won't be identifying any schools for accountability measures. So districts in need of assistance. One other thing I wanted to mention was that on Monday, this past Monday, we had the All District Professional Development Day. And Julie and Allison, in response to work they had done with Joanne and Abby, and Dean, who are our co-presidents and vice president of the association, they had put together a stress, reliance, and self-care session for our staff. We had about 60 participants. Wendy Bodwitch works for the Northeast Consortium, which is our special education consortium. She's a wonderful psychologist who facilitated the group. And this was a launch. We're going to be offering a group, support, support groups throughout the second semester for staff who want to get together and process through some of the associated issues of parenting, teaching, and changing during the COVID crisis. So we're, we're excited about that. We're happy to be able to offer it to support staff who are really on the front lines of this work going forward. So that's a roundup of where we are in the schools. And our, our next topic will be budgets, and we can pick up there when you're ready. Or questions, please.
Pam, I have a quick, two quick questions on the testing.
Yeah.
It sounds like it's going to be a little bit more cost attractive. Do you have any idea of kind of what the magnitude of that is?
$5 per student. But what I'm not certain of is $5 per student, per week, per month. But there will be an option. So six weeks will be offered free of charge at the beginning, so the state will be picking that up. And then we'll be able to determine whether we can continue with it. And at that point, the contract will be made available. They were going to be sending out more details to us post-webinar. The webinar was this afternoon. So they're going to follow up with some of the cost structures. I think what the Department of Ed has done, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, is they've all, they've also offered package support options. So we have nursing staff, and we've already made arrangements to have a nurse assistant at the middle high school. So we think we can cover that component. So for a small school who doesn't have access to that, they can provide additional assistance to come in and either do the testing monitoring. They could do the testing setup. They could do the data organization. So the DESC is trying to leverage some of its resources to come in and be a support around the program. But they've also done all of the liability work. They have pre-designed consent waivers, which is something that we've really focused in on over the past couple of weeks, is ensuring that we have everything necessary in writing to get, to allow students and staff to participate. So I'm, I'm sorry if I cut off your question.
Don't worry. I was wondering if it looks like the effort that we were going to try to launch?
It's exactly the effort we were going to launch, but with a, with a bigger organization behind it and a lot of the pre-thinking and pre-work done to support schools as they're going to implement. I'm not even certain who, who their supplier is going to be. It could end up being that we're working with Ginkgo in the end.
Okay. What about the turnaround? Is it the same kind of turnaround that we were looking at?
They want to launch within the next two weeks.
No, I mean in terms of when you take the test to get?
Time, yep. It's the same timeframe. We could administer it once a week, which is two different days to the two different cohorts, and then have the turnaround time of three to four days.
Okay. Great. That's, that's great news. We can save some Joe Ray me.
Yeah. And to Nina's point, on the call today, they just had more reps from different schools. You've heard a lot from the Wellesley Group. This time, they had, Westwood was, which is a smaller district, they were on the call. Medford was on the call, and Salem. Steve Zirk and City of Salem and Salem Public Schools have teamed up and implemented, most recently in our area. So I do think it's something, I mean, I've talked to our colleagues in Masco-Tritown. They're looking, we were talking about perhaps going in together to see if we could get the Ginkgo cost down. Because if, you recall, the Ginkgo cost was originally at $5 a head, and then it escalated. So we were working with, with the Masco-Tritown Group, the Northeast Consortium, which is, again, is our SPED collaborative, is looking for a partner in it. So I think there's naturally some teaming up happening. Like a lot of other things, we're all, everyone's drinking from the fire hose. The DESC has been moving as quickly as it can. We could have used this a month ago, but, you know, some of the snags we hit in implementation made, you know, everything happens for a reason. Maybe it's to our benefit. So don't quote me on it. I think we wanted, I want to review it with Tanya and the other, Tanya and Suzanne and our nurses, just to make sure they're seeing what I'm seeing. But I think this might be a good, a good support system for us to have. So I think I'm all set. If there aren't any other questions, and Program of Studies is probably next.
Hi, everybody. Good evening. Does my sound okay? Yeah, great. First of all, I just want to say we're really, watching the middle school guys come in today was just like awesome. Watching the sixth graders learn the building, it was, it was just, it was just great. The building was alive again, and that felt real good. And we're really looking forward to having the high school students come back in on Thursday and Friday, and then next week on Tuesday. So it's just, it's just fun seeing kids around, that's all. Program of Studies usually have a lot to say in this presentation, but really, I don't this year. We're not making a lot of changes. Probably one of our biggest adds to the Program of Studies is the vision of the graduate. As you may recall, last year, we spent a lot of time working with a variety of stakeholders, parents, school council, school committee, teachers, students, and the business community to get feedback on the skills and dispositions that we believe students should have upon graduation from Manchester Essex Regional Schools. And we created the vision of the graduate. So we're adding that to the Program of Studies, which is going to be kind of the anchor of the work that we do. And I think we'll be also seeing it played out in the district's strategic plan in the coming months. So that's probably the most exciting part of this presentation. In terms of other changes, really, we're just alternating some courses with social studies. We're looking strategically at what grade levels certain courses are open to. So for example, AP Comp God is very popular. So we're opening it only to seniors to kind of maybe hold that to one section so we're able to offer some of our other electives for our underclassmen as well that are multi-grade. In math, the statistics, AP Statistics got updated because of changes to, from the AP. And that wording is kind of focused on what AP is requiring. And then this year, we're making a concerted effort to really work with our kids on teacher recommendations. Many of our courses have a grade requirement plus teacher recommendation. And we really want to make sure that students understand the teacher recommendation piece. So teachers will be conferencing with kids using our indicators for student success at each level to really help them understand why the recommendation is being made for students to be placed in a specific course. We think that this kind of conversation may help to reduce some of our overrides. But we also want to realize that all of our courses are open to all of our students. We just want to make sure that they are prepared and that they realize what will be expected to them in the course level that they are placed. And that's really all I have. Really simple tonight.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Annie.
So I have a couple of questions. You know, in light of what happened in the past week, it made me think about government, you know, civics. And I know that we try to be very careful about where we come down on certain issues and how we kind of try to be Switzerland. And I am concerned that maybe we're sometimes too deferential. And I'm just one, and I'm sure that this is a conversation that's happening among teachers on, you know, social media and some of their blogs and stuff. But I would love to hear more at some point about our social studies curriculum and kind of how we're educating students about government and democracy and those sorts of things. So that's just a comment. You don't have to respond to it. Second question is, or the second thing is, I'm really glad to hear about this placement thing. Because I think we saw some questions in the, in the fall about placement, and students and parents didn't really know where to go. So I'm really good that, I'm glad to see that you're, you're putting together these kind of, what are they, criteria or things that, that deciding factors. I think that's a good idea. And I guess my final question is, you know, this past year, you've done some remote learning. And I'm wondering if you've thought at all about this question that we've been tossing around for years, which is, you know, is there any cost savings in working with some of our neighbors on, you know, Hamilton Wenham teaches this AP course, and we can do it remotely. And Gloucester does this thing. And, you know, Gloucester's doing some great stuff in STEM. And I'm just wondering how our schools can leverage some of the things we've learned this year to, to do some shared learning or, I just wondered if you've thought about that or where that would come in?
Great questions. First, in just terms of the social studies curriculum, there actually is being a realignment of curriculum in the middle high school. And civics is going to be taught, being taught specifically in grade eight. And then reinforced throughout the levels of the high school curriculum. So there is some deep thought being put into that. And really a kind of a focus on letting students to freely engage in their kind of search for understanding and conversation with having the teacher be the facilitator. So that's something that is going on in social studies currently and has been under review since last, last fall, over a year ago fall. In terms of the remote learning idea, we've had conversations and I think a meeting with the principals with the KPN League again tomorrow, and it's something I'll bring up. Our biggest obstacle is the different schedules between the high schools in terms of being able to schedule that. Because we've had, had conversations with like Hamilton Wenham about Mandarin, Chinese. But maybe we could get a little more creative and that's a conversation I could have with the principals since now we have learned so much more about remote learning and maybe doing things even outside of the school day.
Thank you very much.
Does anybody else have questions for Tricia?
I just have a comment. All right. Did someone else want to speak?
I have a question, but I can go after.
Okay. I just had a quick comment. I loved all of the wording and the language and sort of the whole gestalt around the Vision of the Graduate. I really loved reading that. It was kind of the final product of what we've been talking about for a while. So thank you. That looked great. That was exciting.
Can we put the Vision of the Graduate up? I know it was a.
Yeah, because I have it, but yeah.
Trish, is it in the Program of Studies?
It is in the Program of Studies. It's probably.
Two pages in?
Few pages in, yeah. It's probably right after the mission statement, maybe page six or seven. I think what's exciting about the Vision of the Graduate is that when we went through, our work got halted when we kind of, in March, right? But we had done so much work between September and March with such a variety of stakeholders. And what I was finding exciting about the work was that everyone was, were coming up with the same words and with the same ideas and that there really was a shared vision of what we believe education should lead to within our community. And so our next step in working on this is really creating some pre-K-12 rubrics about what does this really mean? And that's work we should be working on right now, but we're halted a little bit. But we're going to jump back in again this spring and really dive deep into it and make this, you know, more like the standards of what we believe kids should know, be able to do. And it, it does start in pre-K and it goes all the way through grade 12.
That was actually what my question was about. Can I just piggyback right on here then? So when I came into this last early summer, late spring, early summer, I, I think I may have been a little bit confused because I thought that the work of the Vision of the Graduate was still underway. We were scheduled to have the, the, you know, roundtables and things like that. And so I was unaware that this was still continuing. And I, if I was, I think that there are probably some parents who were too, also in light of what's changed since then. So is there any revisiting this or is this a completely done and presented thing at this point? I'm just curious as to like where this is, if it's being put in with the Program of Studies.
No, I think like this is where we're at right now. But I honestly think the Vision of the Graduate does have to be a living document that is revisited. Because as you just said, like world just changed, right? Like the last 12 months. So I think there are things in here that kind of talk about where we are at right now. But I think that there needs to be a cyclical review of this document or otherwise, again, school will become stagnant, right? We'll be stuck on like 21st century skills. Well, all right, it's 2021. Like we're long beyond that now. So I, I really do have a belief that you, there needs to be a cyclical review of everything that we do.
I think that would, oh, Pam, were you going to say something?
I was. So the way we had framed it was that the Vision of the Graduate would act, act as a driver for the development of the strategic plan. So we got to the point of having brought forward the Vision of the Graduate. And, and what Tricia was referring to was we had the Strategic Planning Initiative launched with a survey right around, I think it came out post-February vacation. And that was supposed to be a lead-in to three world cafes. That was going to be hosted by the Creative Education Foundation. They were working with us as a, as a facilitator. They were going to hold the focus groups. And then the information from the surveys, the focus groups, and with the kind of the Vision of the Graduate as the end goal, we were going to be having a teen session in the summer at our retreat with the meet of presidents, school committee, the admin team. And it would be a public session where we were going to be facilitated through the process of taking in all of the data and creating some strategic objectives around it. And we're going to be presenting it in the fall. So obviously COVID-19 hit and that all went on hold.
Right.
I was really optimistic thinking we'd get back, I think I was saying October, October over the summer. Yeah, well, best laid plans. I do think, actually just had a conversation with Julie Riley and said, can we reach out to Global Creative Ed and see if we, if they're ready to come back to work with us? But given everything that's happened, we may want to relook at the structure of how we were attacking it. Because I think we have, in addition to Vision of the Graduate, we have a lot of other questions to answer about where do we want to be in a few years from now. So we are trying to reorganize around that to see what a steering group could look like, given the new set of questions we're going to have to answer. And I think our budget conversation tonight is going to be critical to that work because I think you saw my slide kind of have the crossroads there. If we go in a direction where our future is going to be driven by design to budget, I think strategic planning will look one way. If we're going to continue on, on the path I think we've been on, which is design to best practice and best interests of students based on community wants and needs, and then be efficient with our, our money and, you know, manage it well and make reasonable asks, then strategic planning will look a different way. So I think, as disappointed as I was to not be able to hit that goal that we had for last year in this fall, in a way, it's similar to what happened with testing. Maybe all of this has happened for a reason and we can answer some big questions before we plan for something we can't deliver on.
Thank you. That helps. I, I know that the Vision of the Graduate stuff has been something that I've been most excited to hear get back underway and to be part of. Well, because it partly because then when we as parents have a question about curriculum or, or why is this being taught or why is that being taught? We can look at it and say, well, this is why. And have a, you know, a connect begin with the end in mind. So thank you for the update and that helps clarify where things are.
No problem. I think it's work we're all excited to do. I'm feeling like this, now that we've come back from the break and we're into '21, as crazy as the start of '21 has been, from a school perspective, I think we're starting to look to the future again about, maybe not going back to what was, but getting into some new routines, taking this new learning and applying it and seeing what we can do in the future. But it's time to move forward, for sure.
Thanks, Pam. Thanks, Trish.
Wait, one last thing, just an editorial thing on the Program of Studies. I think you need to update the school committee list.
Sorry about that. I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
I did notice. I think Annie's crazily waving her hand because she has another comment or question.
So I'm looking at these, whatever, what are these called? The Vision of the Graduate. And I, and I think that they should be more explicit. And you're ready to go. Go ahead.
No, I, I think that's where the rubrics come in. What does it look like to be able to demonstrate responsible digital communication? I'm just reading the top one that I can see right now. For each of those topics, that's, that's the next work is to really to make, to define them more deeply.
Well, even if you look at global citizens, right? I mean, let's be honest, we live in a very privileged community and our students are privileged and sometimes I don't think they're aware of it. And I think that that has been something that we've heard from many of our students. We, we've promised and pledged as a school committee that we would work towards that end. And I'm wondering if we should be more explicit about, you know, this sounds very vanilla to me and very, you know, not specific and, you know, it doesn't demand anything. It's like, yeah, yeah, yeah. They, what does that mean? It just, I, I think it should be more explicit and I would love to work with you on that. But that's just one question. And then I do have a question about the school start after this discussion.
So does anybody else have anything on the Vision of the Graduate or the Program of Studies, Tricia? All right. Thank you, Tricia, for putting that together. Do you need us to vote to approve the Program of Studies? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the Program of Studies?
I'll make the motion.
Great. And a second?
Second.
Second.
You have to say your name, especially if you're a man. Sorry. I'm going to say 10 seconds. Okay. I'm going to go roll call. Eric?
Yes.
Annie?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
I think Matt is not yet on. Teresa?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay. Thank you so much, Tricia. And then I know my children have really benefited from the excellent Program of Studies that's been available to them throughout their schooling. So thank you. We, Annie had another question about return to school while you're here with us, Tricia.
Yeah. I just wondered if you could tell us, there's a question about how many students are returning and, and what the return on investment is. Because we've invested a lot of money into this hybrid return. And I'm wondering if you can tell me how many students are planning on returning to the middle and high.
I can speak to the high school only. I don't have the middle school members. So we have approximately 28% of our students choosing to remain remote during the winter months. Students have the opportunity to decide to come back to school or move to remote on a weekly basis depending on health conditions and their own experience. We've made that available to them for those two purposes. We're seeing that more juniors and seniors are electing to stay remote than freshmen and sophomores. The freshman class particularly has a high number of students returning. Only nine are choosing to stay remote. The reasons for staying remote are varied from, you know, compromised family members, their own, students' own compromised health, fear. What I, what I dismayed in hearing is that my friends aren't going, so I'm not going to go. I, that's a reason that, you know, it kind of makes me sad because I think the connection to school and being in school is important. But I'm not sure it's something we can fully control. I know speaking to my colleagues, they have found that when they moved to hybrid, the numbers of students that fluctuated between some were kids that were remote that decided then to come in or there were also schools where large numbers of kids were in and then decided to stay at home because the socialization wasn't what they were hoping for. And, you know, it's something we've taken approach in terms of lunch and things where many schools assign seats and you may not be sitting next to your, your friends. We've tried to make it so that kids can sit near their friends by using QR codes to identify where kids are sitting and kind of taking a different approach to that as we've had the time to think about it. But certainly we'd like to see all kids back, but we also know that families are making some hard choices right now.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Tricia. That was helpful. You know, I know a lot of, yeah, I, I'm, I'm sure there will be some movement as we go along. Thank you for all that. All right. So thanks, Tricia. Really appreciate all of that work and that presentation. And then I think we're ready to start talking about the budget.
Okay. So I think we have formal budget business and then we have workshop budget business. And the formal budget business will be the review and acceptance of the full budget document, which was in your packet. So, Audi, I don't know if there's anything, if there's an order of operations that's preferential to you, do you want to start with the acceptance of the budget document or do you want to move through the discussion first?
You know, my recollection is in the past that we've provided that so people could have detail and review it and maybe ask questions in anticipation of the public hearing. So I don't know that we need an official vote from my perspective, but if you want one for, you know, for the minutes or just to get school committee stance, you know, certainly I would support that. But I am also happy just to answer any questions that people might have. So I, I would say that, you know, the order is really not important of whether we go into the big, it might help to go into big picture strategy before we go into the weeds. I think that might be a good idea, but I'm, I'm open to your suggestion.
No, we're on, we're on the same page. We're on the same page. That makes sense to talk broadly and then if there are any recommendations about changes to be made to the budget based on that discussion or just acceptance of it at that point, we could do that.
And the only thing I would just say, sorry, Pam, it's just that, for those who are wondering, the, you know, at this time, we, we do present a multi-page document that essentially keeps the same numbers as we had in the tentative budget. So at this point, we really haven't made any changes to the numbers that are in there. That's what the workshop is for, is to talk about how we could move forward. So if you're wondering what's in there, we, we haven't made refinements yet. That's really part of the January process that Pam's going to kick off. So I just wanted to clarify that.
So I guess I would start by saying what we need to do by the first week of February is land on a strategy for the budget and a number. We don't have to have all of the decisions made about how we're going to make that number happen. So for example, if we decide we need to make X dollars, X amount of dollars in cuts, we can make those cuts into March and April. So every decision does not have to be made and executed as to how we get to the endpoint, but we have to agree on what the endpoint's going to be. So tonight, I really want to just pose some questions to the committee because I think we do have, as I alluded to when we were talking about the Vision of the Graduate, some long-term decisions to make about how we want to approach budgeting and what the purpose of our budget process is. And I had, I had said, I'm starting to see it shape up in terms of, do we, do we want to change course from how we've been designing program? So the way we operate is we implement best practice, community inputs in terms of, you know, what people would like to see in terms of programs and offerings to students. Do we want to abandon that process, best practice and community inputs, and move to a process where we design to budget and start building from the ground up and only put in things that are mandates and requirements? And then if there's enough money left, then maybe we can offer additional things. So when I start to think of where we're at, we're going to start to have to make some decisions and what our program looks like. The questions I pose to you would be this. If, if we start, we are already in a cycle of having to cut every year just to make level services work. So we've presented you with a level services budget. And what we know about the level services budget is that we are, we're already, I guess we'll take a look here, as a level services budget, we're already looking to make $275,000 in reductions after using $335,000 in reserves. So our real gap is $605,000. So that's where we are off the mark for maintaining level services. Going forward, this gap is only going to grow if we continue to use reserves and make annual cuts, meaning we're calling it level services because we're kind of, we're making it work, but we're really not providing a budget for level services. We are making minor cuts every year. And I think where we were last year is the same place we are this year, which is we don't have areas to make. this year, which is we don't have areas to make minor cuts. We're now looking at program and staff. And program usually leads to staffing reductions because if you're going to eliminate a foreign language program at the elementary, or you're going to talk about going to a fee for service for instrumental lessons and not funding that through a hired FTE, those positions will be lost. So I do think we're at the crossroads of, you know, how much program do we want to cut versus how much do we want to plan for asking for additional resources to fund the program that we think is best for kids. So I've put together a few questions that I think would be helpful for the committee to discuss to help us decide kind of what our next, what our multi-year strategy is going to be with the budget. And I don't think there are any right or wrong answers. I know what I would recommend and I'll certainly do that at some point, but I think it's important for me to hear from you in terms of where you think as an elected board, you'd like to see the schools go in terms of its program and its budget and how those two pieces fit together. Budgeting and the exercise of creating, making a balanced budget is not hard. Living with the outcomes of the decision-making is hard. So I can certainly give you a list of options of things that, you know, would be better to have, but we could do without because we're not required to have them. It's the doing without and how people feel about it after that is the part that is difficult to manage and often to live with. But we may be just going into a different era. We may want different things from our schools and that's okay too. So that's why I think of a discussion about where we want to go and what we want to see from the schools and then what's the appropriate budgeting process to follow. So I guess I would open with, you know, we presented a level services budget. Are we prepared to reduce services to meet the request of the towns for a reduced percentage increase to the annual assessment?
So I'm going to echo what Caroline said last year is, yeah, this may look like a level services budget, but we're not providing level services. Right? I mean, our services are not on par with what we provide. If we go ahead with this, they're not on par with what we provided last year. The other thing I will say is, we've been talking, since COVID hit, we've been talking about the need for support when all these kids get back. So when we get all the kids back in school and things are a little bit more normal, whatever normal's going to look like, we are going to need some significant support for all these kids despite the fact that elementary assessments are in, not seeing a lot of widespread learning loss. I think we're going to see other areas of need, if not academic. So, yeah, it's a, it's, living with those kinds of decisions, I guess I don't really know what to say. Yeah, I'll leave it at that.
Can you, I wonder if we could look at this budget reduction worksheet because it tells a story. And I wonder if you could just kind of walk us through these different lines and we'll see, what does that mean? And where is the, where are we going to get hit?
Annie, before, if I can preempt you, this is Ken, I just, I just want to briefly echo what Shannon said before we go off and kind of, Pam, you're asking some high-level questions and especially around use of reserves. We've, up until this point prior to COVID, we're always talking about maintaining a responsible multi-year budget, which we have done and have done well. COVID is an outlier. And I have not seen or heard anything from any parents or any other members of the community indicating that we need to be doing, pursuing the approach of doing, I think what you're calling, what I call a declining services approach to how we move forward. So if there's a need for funding, that is one of the responsibilities of the school committee to advocate and provide sources of funding and support what we need to provide the education. So I am not in favor of continuing to try to save. I think the, especially in the past year, that the efforts that we've demonstrated fiscal responsibility from holding gap on the playground, the cuts that have been made, everything that's done, there's only so far you can stretch the dollars that exist. So that's my brief synopsis, but hopefully a brief answer to your overall question.
I guess my caution about looking at the spreadsheet is that's the management of how we get someplace. I'm asking where do we want to go? Because I think when we take each small discrete cut, like, we can live with that. Well, we can live with that. But the cuts are going to do two things. It's going to, A, reduce staff, B, reduce program, and let me actually throw in a third. Three, remove options for program redesign. Because as we shed staff, we also shed, like, we've talked about it in the past, like, maybe elementary for, like, and I have no issue, I like elementary foreign language, maybe we want to enhance that program. Maybe we're better served by having more of an immersive experience at the early elementary level and we should be beefing that up. So, you know, cutting it right now to make ends meet may be the least painful because maybe we can move the staff member around and it's not really a cut and it's just a reduction and there's a, we're always looking to try to solve the problem, but we're not, I think what we need to do is, is map a strategy of where we want to go. And that was not a very artful way of saying it. I think we need the big picture. Where do we want to be in a few years financially and program-wise? Not what the details of the program are, but do we want to have options or do we want to just eliminate all options? And then if we need an override, it's just to put money back in reserves and try to reinstate, you know, teachers to maintain class size.
One goal that's got to be that we, that we get the reserves back filled up again. We can't continue to use reserves. We got to get on a path to refill those, period.
But, but that's, so the reason I want to look at this spreadsheet is because we do this every year. We, we reduce, we cut to the bone, and there's, there really is no more fluff. I mean, and I know that, you know, we put pressure on and create tension to the last minute to see where you can find 60 or 40. And the reality is that we dug into reserves last year without even knowing about COVID, knowing that we were putting ourselves in a position to continue to eat out of reserves. And our partners knew that. So, so we're already there. We're already down that path. And the question I think before us is, can we take reserves for how long and when do we fight? And when do we fight for more? But the problem is you're already seeing degradation of your program. And we've seen, we've seen it for several years where, you know, oh, you look at this list, this is 3.5 FTE. Okay, that's very, very deceiving because we've already been saying, okay, you're going to do a little bit over here, your full-time fee FTE, you're going to go over here and then you're going to run over there and you're going to do stuff over there. Because we're trying to stop the bleeding. And I think 3.5 FTE is deceiving because what it doesn't reflect is this kind of like patching up we try to do to make sure we ensure the program. But it's almost like, you know, you got your, you only have so many fingers and many, many holes in the dike. And we're just, we're, what we're saying in making these decisions is, we're going to degrade the program. And, and then we're going to come to the towns, we are trying to figure out when to ask for more. And the thing that's going to happen is, we may get back to like 2016, but you still already had cuts to get there too. So it's not like, we're not arguing to build program, we're not arguing about our educational program, we're arguing about money. And that's the thing that's very frustrating is that, you know, if we decided to get rid of elementary school program, foreign language, and we talked about it how many years ago?
It feels like we talk about it every year.
Yeah. Well, what's, so tell me, what's the option? And it's almost like, we need to shift how we talk about budget and program to be about, here's what we want to build, here's what we want to provide, this is what it's going to take to get there. And Ken, I know you've been saying this in different words, but we're not making the proactive fight as a committee to say, here's what we want for our, and that's what I want to have, that's the conversation I want to have. But we also have these other factors in play, which is the economy and a lot of uncertainty. And so I think if you think about the strategic plan, how do we change how we talk about budgeting and program?
I have a thought on that because my concern is that budget conversation usually comes down to, we have, we, there needs to be an acceptance among the partners that school is going to grow faster than 2.5%. And that, that growth rate isn't about mismanagement or over, you know, or lining the pockets of the school. It's what it costs to run the base operations. And, you know, Avi can give us that in a very technical way. So we're always stuck back on looking at the inefficiency of school and trying to figure out where we might be able to cut some corners. So if we, we can do ourselves a favor and move past that and just accept that our annual growth rate is always going to be around X, which it seems to be right around 3.5, 3.5 to 3.7 is where we're always going to come in. That's kind of our maintenance number. And then if we want to invest, we're going to have to be willing to go a little higher. I don't think we're ever going to get below that number. What we do is we get in this cycle of, we get, we get the override or the extra money and then we, we run it down. And this time it ran down faster because we got that out of left field curve ball on that health insurance spike. So that drained our pockets right away in terms of our capability to manage future budgets. But it's like, we replenish, we reduce, and then we replenish again. And it feels like we never really get the opportunity to do what you're saying, Annie and Ken, which is, this is where we want to be. We would love to, you know, in, in a country, we're talking about the need to understand the world we're living in, in a country where we're becoming more diverse and English is, you know, English is a primary language, but not the only language. Well, how wonderful would it be for our students to have a full immersion program? So they could come out, you know, fluent in Spanish by the time they graduate 12th grade. I would like to be able to set bars higher than just survival. And it feels like we've been living in survival mode for a very long time and having a Groundhog Day conversation about the budget.
Pam, I feel like we started to have those conversations about, you know, our partners understanding that, that is simply what it costs to run a school. And we start, I felt like we got somewhere there right before COVID hit because I felt like we were all kind of on the same page about, all right, so at some point we're going to need a correction. And we were starting to talk about planning for such a correction with all of our partners or both of our partners. So I feel like it's not going to be a huge surprise, but I feel like this was maybe a little bit more of an appetite to stand that, that's basically, that's how schools grow. That's, that's, that's how much it costs to run a school. Am I off-base in understanding that? Did you guys get the same impression? I mean, maybe things are now totally different because of COVID. Perhaps they are, but that's kind of the read I had. And I was sort of feeling like, okay, good, we're kind of getting there.
Does anybody else on school committee want to weigh in? We've had, heard from Annie and Shannon. I just wanted to make sure everybody on school committee gets a chance to talk too. Okay. I, I mean, I agree.
I'm trying.
Teresa? You? Wait, what's happening? She can't talk?
I will, let me take a look.
There it is. When I actually wanted to say something, the mute, it was, it was stopping me. That's what it was. No, I just wanted to say, like, I normally do have lots of questions and input and things, but I really do want to hear what some of the more senior members on the committee thinks because they've seen the history of this and they've been through the cycles of this a little bit more. And so I really am interested in, in hearing some of that. I have my own thoughts and opinions, but I'm still trying to work out getting the facts so I can form them a little bit more smartly.
Are you calling us old? Is that what you just said?
Maybe that was the wrong word. As an old person on the committee who's been here for, for seven years, I will say that we've been making cuts ever since I got on the committee. And that's disappointing to me because I moved to Essex partly because of the wonderful public school system. And I would not have considered living in Essex did it not have a wonderful public school system. And I plan on living here for a long time. And I don't really want to live in a community that doesn't have a good public school system and a strong dedication to its children, even when I don't have children in school. So I am really in favor of continuing to provide excellent public schools for our children.
Can I ask a question then, Sarah?
Yes.
Since I'm in the learning and acquiring here. So, again, so we have the two partner towns and then we are our own entity. So at what, I mean, we have to also consider the broader needs of the communities. And again, right now with the economic uncertainty and stuff. So, I mean, does this come in terms of when you guys were developing that vision of the graduate and things, really following one path kind of already? So are we talking about just making a change right now or really just establishing that this is the path we're going to follow? Or, or do, I mean, do we, do we need, do we get more opinion from the member communities or how do we get that? Is that just from symptoms? I'm trying, I'm trying to work out an order of operations in my head so that I can wrap my head around it a little more.
Can I comment or just add, add my perspective on that, Teresa's trying to give you the answer?
Please.
One of the things in my four, maybe five years now at school committee has been a real focus on building credibility around the budget, planning and saying we're going to deliver and delivering on that. And I have to say, having been part of a number of different business organizations, Avi, Pam, the administration are very good at doing that and delivering and being fiscally responsible even when I'm like, we should be spending the money. No, let's, let's do that. So I think in part also the hard work folks like Caroline Weller, Shannon Erdman, all the folks who have done the ties to the finance committee. We've built credibility with the citizens, I feel. We've built credibility with the town government and the town officials and those dialogue channels are pretty open from what I understand of them. And I don't think if we say, hey, look, here's where we need to get to, that it'll be, oh, you're, you're, you're coming out of nowhere. This is just another goofy school committee spending thing. No disrespect to past school committees, but when I looked at the, the spending and the what's asked for and what was received in years going back 10-plus years ago, it was a lot more erratic. This is very stable, very tightly managed. Anybody can correct me on that one or I may not have represented it well, but that's been my impression after.
We'll talk later.
That's helpful. So, I mean, I wouldn't be here if I didn't care about a strong program, but particularly for years to come, you know, and I, you know, especially as we have a couple of open seats coming up, these are things that we need to be considering, you know, in the, in the bigger context. So like I said, I'm, I'm still trying to learn and hear.
So Tricia, I would say I'm sounding the alarm bell. I was throwing the yellow flag a couple of years ago and now I'm sounding the alarm bell that, if you look at this page, program reductions and staffing reductions, we've been, the slight decline in enrollment has given us some options in terms of reducing staff through attrition, which it hasn't really hit the program yet. It's reduced our ability to bring in school choice, which we can talk about separately because that's kind of a, kind of damned if you do, damned if you don't. Because if we reduce staff, we limit our options. If we limit our options, we're reducing our revenue. The reduction in school choice revenue is another cost passed on to towns because those seats are now filled by residents. So that's kind of like a vicious cycle that we're in. That's not about the value of school choice because I think there is a lot of value in it. It's just about the financial mechanism. But when we're starting to talk about program reductions and staffing reductions, we're start, the staffing reductions are going to start getting into the conscious decision to run the risk of inflating class size or purposely inflating class size. So we may not be, if we may not have 22, we may have to settle for 25 or 28. There's, that's a legitimate way to go. But that, you know, that has always been something, every time we're adding staff, it's to maintain that class size bench run. So staffing reductions will get into class size inflation and program reductions are going to start to hit programs that are valuable. Or serve a purpose in addition to their value, like providing for prep time for teachers. So the entire structure of specialists at elementary level is both an enrichment for students, but also fulfills a contractual obligation for teachers to have time to plan. So you can only go so far before you both eliminate enrichment opportunities for kids and then you need to find an alternate way of providing. and then you need to find an alternate way of providing the prep time that has been handled. I've been part of this process in other districts with increasing the number of relief days. So that all prep time gets moved into a half day. So it could be when every Wednesday is a half day because that's the catch up time. And I don't think that's best practice either to, you know, run someone ragged from beginning of the day to end of the day and then give them some catch up time on Wednesday. So that's the warning flag that I'm throwing now, the big red flag, which is it's going to get into the way, it's going to impact the way that we do things and some things that we have held sacred for a long time.
I have a few things to add to, if you're done, Pam.
I'm done.
Just a few questions that have come up during this budget season that I just wanted to make sure we sort of think about. One is, can't we save money by cutting teachers because our enrollment has gone down over the years? And you answered that very well with a slide that showed how much our need for other services has risen and how we really can't. And we've cut several full time employees over the years, but we really need all those bodies. And especially post COVID, we're going to need all of our boots on the ground, as it were. Another question that comes up a lot is why is our school budget so big relative to our town budget? And I did a little research on that and it, when you look at other regional school districts, we all have similar issues. Our percentages of our town budgets is pretty high. I think that's just a function of how our regional school districts work with our towns. School districts are probably the biggest employer in the towns and also probably, you know, one of the most expensive things, serving the most number of people in your town. And the last question that comes up is, gosh, our teachers seem to like, do we pay our teachers too much or was there, were their raises too big? And our teachers actually make just around the average in Massachusetts salary. And if we had to have, you know, cost of living increases to get them there, then that's what we had to do. Our teachers are certainly not making a lot more than other teachers. We're just right around in the middle. So I just wanted to clear those up because those are the kind of the big three that I hear from people. So I think we're running a tight budget. I think we're very reasonable and I think.
All that comparative data is available in the town, the budget report that is sent to every resident in town annually. And it's also available on our website. So, you know, I think that that's something that we point to every budget season that we are not an outlier. We are kind of right in the middle. We manage our budget well. And, you know, it's stunning to me that last March you saw social media a buzz with how great teachers were. How do they do all this? We're, they're saints. And now we're like, here's where we are. But I I think in, to answer your question, Pam, as two communities, we value education. We take great pride in our school district. I don't think that that has changed. I think that in general, our population wants to have excellent programming and they want us to do so in a responsible manner, which we have done. And so, you know, I know that I was kind of a jerk last year about getting into a reserve because I worry about reserves because I feel like it's a slippery slope. But I will fight for you. I will always fight for you whether I'm on this committee or not. And so I guess I want to be mindful of the of the requests that come to us from our two towns. But I also want to ask our two towns, you're asking us to make reductions that are painful, that are going to make a difference in our program and in our ability to deliver that program. So tell me what we're up against. You know, is this, is this so that you can, you know, fund something over here? Is it to reduce the tag? Like, tell me what it is that we're, because we have to fight for this too. We have to fight for those people who are saying, what the hell are you doing? We don't want you to reduce the school budget. There are just as many people out there saying, do not reduce the the number of teachers. Do not increase class size as there are people saying, I think unfounded statements about how we manage our budget. So, you know, there is a, we have to kind of be able to speak to both of those populations. And I I am concerned that we are being asked to reduce the budget not to make a point sometimes instead of it being something that is absolutely necessary. So I'm going to go out and say that.
Annie, I'm going to agree with you wholeheartedly. I mean, you and I have been doing this together for a while, a long time on on FinCom. I mean, on the collaboration. And I think we've had some tough conversations over the years. And then I think, you know, to Ken's point, we've shown that we do manage this budget and the school district very responsibly in a fiscal, fiscally responsible manner. So I think we gained some street cred there. And I think we are in a position to to say, hey, look, you know, exactly what you said, what are we up against? What, what, why are we cutting? What, what do you, why do you need us to cut and, you know, help us to avoid that? So I think, I agree with you. I think I think we need to have those conversations and good thing we're going to have a collaboration group in a couple of days.
Is the reason for cutting because Prop 2.5 makes cuts inherently the default option?
Mm hmm, yeah. And and what, Sarah?
Well, I think that has to be a community. That's the community decision to make because I think there are community models out there that doesn't accept that two and a half has to be the cap. That there's an acceptance that the growth rate is higher and that I feel like why, if we can come to some agreement, kick the tires, look at it again, we're not, nobody's making up this growth number. It's real and it's not about management. It's about growth, growth items that are somewhat beyond our control. Then you get into, well, how do you manage the situation that you have as opposed to always fighting against that can't be the number, it has to be closer to two and a half. And we have plenty, there are plenty of communities that grow at 3.8 or four. And they accept that that's where the schools are at.
I think the frustrating thing about our budget is when you look at where we have contractual obligations, and we heard this conversation happen at the town side at the at the Essex Fin Committee. You know, there was an acknowledgement that they have contractual obligations that they have to meet. We have the same. And then what's left is what we can pay, what we can spend on education. It's, it's very frustrating when you have a district that is, it's not part of a town. You know, if you look at the towns of Gloucester and Ipswich, their their costs are combined with their towns. And so sometimes very hidden where the cost of insurance and and those kinds of things. But we, ours is out there because we are an independent body and we're dependent on the two towns. So.
And if you use the measure per pupil, or per pupil is in the average range as well and it's lower on KPM. So, you know, I don't, I think it was Shannon that made, Sarah that was making the point. We are solidly on our spending and our structure in the middle of the pack. We're still producing really great outcomes for kids.
Exactly. Excellent product, an excellent return on investment, which people cannot forget.
Sorry, I had one more. No, go ahead. Was that Shannon? Sorry.
Ken, she wants you to go.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I haven't seen the pictures. I just wanted to say one thing that we haven't said in this conversation. And while it feels like we're getting ourselves psyched up for the, it's a discussion that we have to have because in the past years we've held back. One thing that I have not heard is the fact that within Manchester at least, and I suspect Essex will be having this discussion, there is talk about, or not talk, there's projects in front, whether it's 40B or some sort of growth in low income housing or need for, need for housing. I suspect the housing and therefore the school age population, chances are it's probably going to be increasing in the next few years as a result of new growth within the towns. I'm not hearing in Manchester that we're not going to build housing. I'm hearing, geez, what's the option to most effectively provide affordable housing? Whether it's going with the developer option or coming up with an internal. So we're going into this with new school at the elementary level. We know we're going to need an Essex elementary school, potentially higher population growth. And I don't see anybody asking us for, to kind of save our way, continue to save our way to success.
That is an awesome point, Ken. Those conversations have been happening in in Manchester at least for the last, like, you know, what, nine months? Six months kind of at the forefront. And there is also a discussion about adding additional dwelling units to each piece of property. So not only are you talking about 40B and, you know, affordable housing, but you're talking about the possibility if everybody built an additional dwelling unit, almost doubling. You know, not that everyone would, but it it opens the floodgates. So that's a, that's an excellent point, Ken. I'm glad you brought that up. I completely forgot about it. I think that adds further to, you know, our, our position.
Well, I'm just going to, I'm just going to add two real quick things. One is that people will say, oh, well, because Manchester is, you know, low taxes and an effective place to do it and the schools are good. You're attracting newcomers or kind of along the same lines as because I think we do an effective job with student services. Oh, you're attracting people that need those services. And that's the wrong attitude and the wrong approach to have. We're here to educate, to Annie's earlier point about civics and we're creating the next generation of citizens and making sure that we can go, we got to provide for that. This is not the time to be eating seed corn.
In both your comments about the expansion of the town is something that just since our, our couple of conversations that we've had about the budget this year, something that I've come to really learn in 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 studying budgets over the years. There's a micro focus on the COLA, but really it's the size of our program, right? So if we want to, if you, if you think the way to reduce the school budget is through staffing, the only way to get there is to really reduce the size of your program, reduce the number of people that you have in the organization. So it's a downsizing exercise. I don't think it's an annual adjustment by point five or 1.0 to the grid or to the COLA. I mean, that that deserves long term continued attention and creativity. But really, the size of our program has expanded both in offerings, whether it is required services or AP classes and enrichment opportunities like ASR for kids. So we do do a lot of things that are above and beyond the core that we have to offer. But those are the things that typically people see as markers of the defined program that we offer. So I think that's why I tried to frame the discussion. Really, if we need to, if we're going to move away from accepting how we grow, we're also going to have to move away from accepting that we can always stay this broad program. We're going to have to bring some things in line and go with a more bare bones approach. And I think I'm hearing clearly that's not the direction that we want to go in. We're proud of our program. We're offering good service to students and families and we should continue down that path. So if that's the case, then I think it turns into a discussion about how do we manage the reserves until we can work with our partners to increase our revenue? Because I think when we look at this graph again, you can see so the 275 is the number that we we marked for ourselves that we have to reduce to stay in level services. And then the 570 represents going to two and a half for Essex. So just this year, maintaining our own goal and meeting our level service budget number, which I think keeps our spending at three point, our assessment at 3.75, AVI, you can correct me if I'm wrong. That's starting to build a $600,000 gap for us going forward. Moving to the next benchmark, which is to be two and a half for Essex, is 900. And the final column gives you a sense of what we would have to do program and staffing reduction wise to get to the 900. And I'm still shy 126,000 in ideas to get us there. So this is the hole we would be digging out of beginning next year if we move to the middle column.
Pam, can you repeat what the the percentage was for Essex at 570?
At 570, I think that gets them to two and a half. Am I right on that, AVI?
I thought you said that was 900 on the on the far right column was two and a half. And then the middle.
Middle column is two and a half for Essex, which is effectively a 900,000 gap from the level services budget.
Yep. So we, we haven't done an apportionment yet. There's a couple of things that are going to be changing. But if we just said, let's keep the number at two and a half because that's a number that people are familiar with due to the the name of the law and, you know, the overall intention of the law to stay at that number when you can. That would be the, going from 275, which is our current unidentified cuts to 570 total, regardless of where the two towns land. But the difference between 570 and 900 is the fact that we already have 335 of reserve usage in the budget. So that's really kind of a carry forward structural deficit that we just need to be aware of, especially if we're starting to think about not just this year or fiscal '22, but the multi-year where we want to be from sustainable budgeting practices, point of view. Does that answer your question, Shannon?
Yeah, I think so. The way I'm looking at this is the three columns, 275, 570, 900. So in the 275 and 570, we're using the reserves, the 335, I guess, plus, well, never mind, but the 335 for both years. But then to get to 900, we're not using as much from the reserves, we're taking out of the program instead.
What I'm, what I'm trying to show with the 900 column is if we didn't use reserves at all and had to cut $900,000, we would need to do all of these program cuts in this column plus additional program reductions and staffing reductions that would increase class size. And we would still need to find another $126,000 in cuts. That's to get off using reserves and just.
Okay, that's the way I read it. Thank you.
Yeah.
How do we split the baby?
I would recommend not splitting the baby. If you're asking me for a recommendation, I think we can, I would stay in the level services column and look to continue to refine the healthcare number if we think it's going to be a positive year there. And I think we have to have a discussion about the rate of growth for retiree health that perhaps in a way is using a different type of reserve to support the budget. But at the same time, we establish that account to help facilitate this problem when it came along and the problem has come along. So is there a way we can operationalize the trust fund to support the the increased growth in retiree health? I would stay here and try to use some operational cuts and and budget estimate re, hopefully revision to try to meet the 270 mark and stay as far away from possible as program and personnel cuts. Because these are only going to turn into buybacks later on down the line.
So let's talk about that line item, the OPEV contingency, because I think that's one of the things that Mike Flynn had had said. Let's look at that. If, is that, is that the maximum that you would ever want to take out of that line for, in, within a year? Can we talk a little bit about that, AVI, about what is, what is the impact of that?
Sorry, I was just going to unmute my phone. So there's the short answer and there's the complicated answer. The short answer is that.
Give us the complicated one, AVI, come on.
I'm dying. Well, I just want to, you know, it's one of those areas where you get into long term planning and, you know, your fiduciary responsibility over a trust fund. So that's the complicated answer, but just getting right to the punch. You know, we have over $2 million in there. You know, we're marching towards three with the fiscal '21 and '22 budget estimates that are in there. And we still have a contractual obligation in addition to, I think, a fiscal responsibility obligation to continue to put money in every year based on the formula that we created and also because it was negotiated together with Teachers Association based off of changes in the health plan. So I'm not sure that we're talking about changing what we put in. But in terms of what its allowable uses are for, it is absolutely allowed to be used for annual costs in retiree healthcare. And so as we see that number continuing to grow significantly to the point where, you know, retiree health insurance now, we're talking about numbers of 1.2 million dollars. You know, fiscal '17 as an example, it was around 687,000. So it's doubled in just about five to six years. That's where it does start to make sense to use some of those funds, especially when you're in a tight budget situation. That's the short answer. The long term answer is exactly how much should you spend? It requires, I think, further analysis. I would feel very comfortable with with a small amount of usage in the current fiscal '22 budget cycle, provided that we have. in the current fiscal '22 budget cycle, provided that we have a long-term plan. It's kind of like what we're talking about with reserves all this time. It's fine to use them. That's what they're there for. But if you don't have an end game and you're just spending down essentially what is savings, then that's not responsible. So I think they're there to be used for this exact purpose. We are seeing that the time is, we're at that kind of inflection point where we're going from putting money aside to needing to use it. So I think that that makes good strategic sense. I think that would be fiscally responsible to begin starting to allocate some of those monies. I think we just need to have a plan that's multi-year in nature that says how much. And so I think we could pretty easily set a number for this year's budget cycle and then agree to go and study in maybe partnership with our actuary for what a multi-year plan might look like, for how to calibrate between what we're putting in and what we're taking out and when. The other very simple answer I would give you is that, you know, generally you wanna be, if you have either an endowment or savings account that's growing interest, which this one is, you certainly wanna avoid spending into your principal if you can. You wanna spend some of the growth rate if you can. That's where you wanna be over multiple years. So that's another type of principle that I think we're gonna wanna be thinking about as we get to the multi-year strategy. But for now, I do think it's appropriate to have some number on the table that we can use as we get to our budget cycle.
So the reason I'm asking is because I worry about this use of reserves and, you know, and kind of the timing of, okay, so when do we go for an override? Because that's, we need to talk about that, too. You know, I think we had estimated two years out, maybe three years out. But, you know, if we can help, help the, or stave off the use of reserves with this OPEV contingency, you know, could we bump that up a little bit to kind of fall between the, you know, to acknowledge the request of the towns or alleviate some burden there? But with the agreement that we would go for an override maybe sooner than rather than later. I think that we haven't kind of pinpointed where the alarm bells go off in the use of reserves.
I think if we're dipping into the OPEV fund, it's basically the alarm bells are going off. I mean.
Yeah, yeah.
Trade a reserve fund for another. And if you're not gonna be as dependent on the, you know, the reserves that we've been using for the last couple of years, you're gonna become dependent on another.
Right. I want you to know I agree with you. It's just, yeah. I mean, we're solving one little piece of a problem.
Right.
But the other problem is, you know, it's kind of like, if we do this, then we will do the other 2.5 on this date. And we haven't said the second part of that.
Well, I think, as I said before, we were starting to have those conversations. And I think we were starting to have the buy-in on that it needs to come sooner rather than later and needs to be a regular occurrence. You know, every 10 years, every, whatever it was that we had discussed. I mean, we are kind of, when did we do the last one? 15, 13?
15, fiscal '16.
16, I was close.
Before that, it was 10 years. I think if it weren't for the 28% increase, we'd probably make it to 10 years. We might be talking about eight. Either way, that's pretty good. And I think, you know, if you look at our multi-year spending growth, which I was just taking a look at again, you know, those numbers are very favorable. They're, you know, as Pam said, in the threes. So I think, we talked last year about the fact that we have the multi-year budget process. Let me say it differently. You know, with reserves being strong, but operating budget being challenged, we had one problem in one area and not in another. But we have short-term capability to fund our budget if we have a long-term strategy. So I think if we can get out of viewing just a single year budget for a moment, that was the whole reason why we started doing multi-year budget. Towns both asked us to look at it. We wanted to do it, too. It helps them with their planning. And I think this is really where you use the multi-year budgeting strategy to say, okay, let's not get too hung up on fiscal '21 or '22 or even '23. Let's talk a little bit about what our multi-year goals are for the program and what a sustainable level of growth is and sustainable level of taxpayer contribution is, provided that during the interim years, we can live within our means. So that's really, I think, you know, we can do anything for fiscal '22. I think the real question is, what are we gonna do for multiple years?
Right. So that leads to the next part of our question. So if we're gonna talk about, you know, kind of taking money out of various reserve funds, we gotta have a long-term plan. We've gotta know kind of what the backstop is there. So I think now we have to start asking ourselves reality, realistically, what is the backstop? Is it a couple of years down the road? Is it next year? I think that's what we kind of need to figure out here in this conversation, isn't it? So that when we have the conversations with our partners and on Friday at the collaboration meeting, you know, we can be ready to have that conversation and be able to present that question.
And maybe to help simplify it, because I feel like we've been so deep in it for so long. This all makes sense to us. But the way I've started to look at it, and Avi, correct me if I'm framing this wrong, but right now, to be level services, we're shy $605,000. So next year in fiscal '23, we're gonna start $605,000 in the hole right out of the gate. So we can assume that the 335 is going to have to potentially double to make us whole, and then we'll have to go through an exercise of cutting to meet level services again. So this is going to escalate, and it may not double. It could be shy of that. But this is going to grow at a rapid rate going forward. So I think if someone's just tuning in and trying to figure it out, this is the number that is the real gap between where we wanna be and where we are. And that's potentially going to grow over and over in the next few years. I would say right now, spring '23 for FY '24 override would be where we wanna go, using next year to plan, make a case, identify what the purpose is of it, and then begin early in our process the following year.
Yes.
But that's just, I'm an N of one. That's just kind of how I'm seeing it. I don't see this, I think that'll give us a sense of strategic planning, what, you know, the goals may be of the long-term budgets, but also some time to heal from COVID and get a sense of what the finances will look like for everybody in the future.
And can I just ask? Wasn't FY '23 the planned date when we were next to the Jasper override?
I thought it was '24.
Okay.
I think we said eight to 10 years. And that's kind of standard. It had been 10, tends to be a little longer.
Two points.
Remind people about, sorry, go ahead, Annie.
No, there was no override in Essex. It was a correction that we had accounted for in the budget. It was only an override in Manchester. So Essex has gone quite a while without an override. And then, Avi, if you, in your answer, could speak to, what is at stake when you decimate your reserves? If you could speak to that a little bit. I know we keep saying it, but I wanna reiterate it for anyone who's not been in our previous meetings.
Well, I think the most recent example is responding to COVID. I think we would be in a much different position had, you know, to say, you know, no, we can't roll out devices for our one-to-one. We can't make sure that we're fully staffed. No, we would not be able to get all the PPE that we need because the Department of Ed has really, while they've been supportive, the funding doesn't really flow to our school system the way it does to allow the urban districts. And that's based off of their data on where we stand financially to other communities, you know, between property values and income tax levels. So that's been the most recent example. Obviously, you may remember in prior years, we've had certain things around, you know, emergency needs for facilities, you know, while waiting for the Memorial School project to go. We had a boiler that went unexpectedly. We know that we're, you know, working on keeping Essex running, and we know there's some facility liabilities there. And then every time you go to borrow, you know, we've been upgraded due to good financial management. That's from S&amp;P. I mean, that's not just some organization. That's, you know, the same group that looks at bonds of corporations to, you know, this one level below AAA. And that's really because we've done everything we can. We're partly just dependent on where we get our revenue from, which is heavily based on the town's revenue. It's really a reflection, in fact, about the town's good financial management as well. And, you know, if that were in jeopardy, which it would be if we started to spend down our reserves, that's when you start to see higher borrowing costs. And as people know, we've done a very good job with borrowing. In fact, we've also been able to refinance our debt multiple times. And even though we don't talk about that because it's in the capital budget, not in our annual budget, we've continued to see savings that we've done with refinancing our bonds because we are good for credit. So we still have to borrow another $4 million for the Memorial School project. We are assuming that Essex Elementary will need some type of significant capital investment in the next five to 10 years. And we wanna be ready to keep that cost to taxpayers low. So, you know, we can cut a corner financially now, but I think ratings agencies see right through that, and then it just turns into higher borrowing costs down the road. So there's a lot of reasons why these types of multi-year strategies ultimately are in taxpayers' best interest. And so we wanna, we're trying to manage those dollars very carefully for their benefit. The other thing I would just say very briefly is that, you know, with the $52 million school project for Memorial School, that project financially is going very well, not only on time, but it is currently under budget. You know, we try, we wanna make sure we make budget. But I think, you know, at this point, we're seeing definitely that we are having savings. So those are other areas that wherever we have the opportunity to yield savings, we do. So that's just, that's a big, big taxpayer ask. And both towns stepped up to support that. We wouldn't be anywhere without that support. But we are doing our part to make sure that when we get those funds, we manage them as well as we can.
Again, we've got cred. Thanks, Avi. Any other questions? You guys wanna weigh in on thoughts? I'm gonna go back to your questions page and see how we're doing. That's not it. That's it. Have we answered all these in our discussion?
I think we did.
Okay. My pointer here.
I would like to see the reserve numbers with, you know, just so that we know what they are, so that we can see what the use of 600 something would be or what 335 would be and where it puts us.
Okay.
Don't have to do it today, but just, you know, next week or.
Kind of the rundown, like if we run out in the next two years, where will we be?
Yeah, there is that thing you guys did, I think, last spring. And I love, I love when the Avi is able to put it in and then it recalculates.
I knew Annie was gonna say that. We love it with spreadsheets and teachers, how they work.
Yeah. Oh, I don't wanna know how it works. I just, I wanted to see the magic in real time.
Formula behind it and how it compounds.
Yeah. That is revealing and real in your face.
I hope, you know, I would like to say, I hope that members of the community will reach out if we're misrepresenting. I mean, I think that people in Essex want strong schools. If I'm wrong or people want something different, I hope they will let us know. Mostly what I hear from parents is they want us to be doing more, not less.
Well, when we went for the last override, we gave, you know, three columns. And we went for the middle column, if memory serves.
Yep.
And we had a lot of pushback from people saying, we want you to go for the column all the way on the right, 1.2. That's right.
Yeah.
You know, a lot of people pushing back, saying, we want you to go for the whole enchilada. And, you know, I think we decided to go kind of the middle road because we figured we'd have a better shot at being successful there. But I was sort of pleasantly surprised by how many people were really adamant that we go for the whole thing. And I wanna add to what Sarah's saying. I also want people to reach out to their finance committees.
Yeah.
If they feel very strongly about equality, school system, I want them to reach out, not to us, to the finance committees and to the boards of selectmen, to let them know that this is something important to them. Because when we're making these decisions, if it's in a vacuum, it's harder to do this work. So I would really encourage community members to reach out to all of your other elected and appointed officials.
And that's a good time.
Shannon, that, sorry, but that really helps me wrap my head around things, too. It's not us that needs to take in all of this information. That's, you know, the people we work with are the finance committees and the boards of selectmen. So they need to be hearing this, if that's the case. We're here because we love education. We want excellent educations for all the kids. I think that's pretty understandable. But those people need to hear that if people feel that way.
But I also wanna say that we do acknowledge that we have good partners, that they do support education. We hear this from them. So we know the pressures that they're under. And I think I wanna approach this as a problem that we all need to solve. And it's not just our problem, it is our community's problem. And so how do we solve the problem in a way that does not degrade our educational program? And that's a very simple request, but it's a hard solution. So, you know, we know that people value education.
Yeah. Okay. So where are we going?
Yeah, so to Sarah's question, I think we've answered everything we can tonight. Kind of just pick this down here, what the size of the correction will be, what it'll look like, the purpose of it. I think that's more long-term planning. So what I'm hearing tonight, just to recap, is we're comfortable where we're at with maintaining level services. You have a budget document that represents that. We have a public hearing coming up on January 26th. So I, to Shannon's point and, or request of the community, to Annie's point and request of the community, that's a great opportunity. That's gonna be a night where we're gonna hear from the public. And it's pro-school, you know, people who support schools, people who feel that schools need to be more efficient. That's the time for them to weigh in. So we should be able to get some inputs there to see if we're on the right track. Then we'll come back the following week, process those inputs, and make a decision about what we're passing forward to the towns for our adopted budget. So I'm hearing out of tonight, we're gonna try to stay in this column. The other question is, do you want us to develop any scenarios for program reduction and staffing reductions?
No, but I wanna ask you something on that really quickly. On the bottom line on that, the one FTE, three, well, the one FTE that we're talking about, is that attrition?
No, none of this is attrition.
That's kind of where I was going with that.
Yeah. So program reduction would be either the consolidation or reduction of a program, which would reduce the number of FTE we need to run it. So for example, these are things we talked about in spring, so there's no surprise. We could go with just as part of the school day, general music at the elementary and have all music lessons go to fee-for-service before or after school. And I think in here, and program reductions would also be elementary foreign language. So they're programs, but the program elimination reduction has an FTE impact.
Can we move that lay bus over into the left? I mean, I, as an Essex rep, would love to see that reduction. I am so tired of seeing that here.
That's up to you guys to decide. I mean, I guess, given where we're at this year and we have the effort we're going to wanna make to bring kids into school and not knowing what extra services they may need and whether they may all fit in the body of the day, is it something we want to hold off on a little bit? I mean, we ended up putting, last time we cut it, we ended up putting half of it back. So this is the second half of it.
And so do we have firm numbers of how many people are using that bus?
Yeah, no one used it. Remember, we kept track after we cut it and put it back? And we found like four kids were using it. We tracked it.
Why don't we dust off those numbers in the report and see if we can put some data together?
That would be great.
To help make a decision.
Can we also look at, you know, possibly, I know you're gonna hate me for this, the bumping. me for this, the bumping up the OPEC contingency? Um, and I know that, that I'm doing the same thing, I'm doing the same thing to that line item that I'm doing to everything else, but, you know, it's just, it hurts.
I think the other thing we, we haven't discussed tonight, and we should, and we don't have to do it before we finalize the budget, but I think if we're looking at this level of cut in reserve uses, we need to look at our, our fees, our fee structure for athletics and for building use, to see if there's a way to generate more revenue there.
Um, so, when's the last time we increased fees?
Three years ago. Three or four years ago, yeah.
Oh, really?
Mm-hmm.
Hmm.
But have we increased building usage fees? I don't think we have.
No, that's been, that's been probably like five or six years, if not more.
So, the only thing I'd say about that is I think, um, you know, the building usage fees are going to be for things that, um, people need a lot of speak for, for a lot of people. And I wonder how quickly we're going to get back to scenarios where you have auditoriums of people, you have gyms.
Good point.
Gyms, probably. But I just think that maybe we need to think about that.
Yep.
How much do you see is, I mean, what would the, what would the results be? Is it worth it? I guess that's the question I have.
Well, I think, just to do our, just to make sure we're looking under every rock, we want to make sure that we're holding to that 60-40 split of general, um, operations and fee. This is funding for athletics that we hold to, because I, I think I recall over the past few years, the general fund portion has been going up to offset shortfalls. So, if that's the case, I think we should just reset to make sure that's holding tight. You know, so in my mind, before I'm going to look to reduce an academic offering, I want to make sure we are, we're leveled on how we've organized our spending.
So, maybe we should just do that anyway, you know, it's, maybe we'll take some of the pressure off. I mean, I, I worry about, we keep, we keep reducing the, um, small cap expenditures, um, and, you know, that's another pledge that we made, which was to maintain our buildings so that we wouldn't be, um, behind the eight ball on that, so.
Well, I think if you look in the budget, if you're looking at this line, Annie, to defer.
Yeah.
So, essentially what we're saying, we're either going to defer the small cap, or we'll fund it through stabilization, so another reserve fund.
Yeah.
You know. Okay, Annie's on top of this, he isn't left.
I'm not laughing, but, uh, yeah, no, I'm just kidding. I, it was fiscal 18 that we changed athletic fees. The building use has been much, much longer, but tho, those fees are low. I don't know that they will generate that much, but of course, adjusting them just to get with the times is probably appropriate. We can take a look at that.
And I guess my think, my thinking on the building use fees is it'll help to replenish what we might, it might help to offset what we'll have to draw down from stabilization and be another way to contribute to things like the field that needs to get replaced, that we're planning to use stabilization for. So, it's kind of a way to generate some revenue to offset some of the drawdowns we might be doing to the reserve fund.
Did anyone buy a Powerball ticket today?
I did. I bought a million, that is a Massmillions and a Powerball. And I have grand plans for setting up a trust fund for Manchus or Essex, okay? So, I hope I win. Um, quick question, just about, you know, I'm wondering for the committee, what would be a good way to visualize or have available in this spreadsheet where we are with the reserves? So, if stabilis, that stabilization is one reserve fund, can we have that, um, current state listed somewhere here, so at least we know like what we're taking against the bucket? Does that make sense?
Yeah, maybe in like a bar graph or something to make it easier to see. Yeah, we'll work on putting that together.
Okay, I just want to see it on this, so if I, so if it can say, okay, we're taking 40K from this fund, which is now at X dollars. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I get it.
All right, thank you.
You want to see each fund and what the drawdown is and what does, what that does to the overall total of funds available.
That's a great idea. Thank you, Annie. Because we can talk about this, but then, unless, know what that fund is that you're depleting.
Yeah, and I think we also have been talking about all of the funds together as, as reserves.
Yeah.
When they are, they are different, and also stabilization already has some allocations that we've made for expenditures on the fields and the playgrounds. So, that's also, that's something we need to account for. Lot of talking.
Yeah. So, it sounds like we have a direction.
We do. This is really helpful. Thank you.
All right.
I think we're at the end of the agenda. Or you're at public, uh, you're at school committee comment.
That's Teresa's favorite part. Is there any school committee comment?
There is. Are you shocked? I know, I know. Um, just actually, just one thing that I wanted to, um, ask if it might be helpful for parents to know, how or what the district general, what has been the guidance given to schools, maybe in chunks, you know, maybe elementary, middle, and high school, about how to or, or if, if there are restrictions on talking about current world events and things? So, for instance, with the events last week, um, you know, what my daughter and her friends were all talking about, all of it amongst themselves, but there really wasn't any discussion in school the next day about it, like, at all. So, I'm just, I didn't know if that was a, a thing that, that was intentional, or if it was, if it's open to people to know, you know, to, to be talking about, whether it's left up to teachers, or how that's handled, um, and at what age levels. Is there any direction? And I just, I just think that would be helpful for families. Some families are having these conversations in their homes as these things come up, and some, many are also not. So, just wondering where the, where things are with the different age levels on that. That was not a succinct way to say it, but I think you get what I'm saying.
I do. In the general rule of thumb, we're using the National Association of School Psychologists kind of infographic and then, um, guidance document to, um, give suggestions to parents and educators about how to handle the conversations with each of the different developmental levels. Typically, there is, um, light or minimization of it. Minimization is the wrong word, because it sounds like we're making light of the situation, but I think it's more of a systems, uh, operation normal at the elementary school, unless students are bringing it up and then they address it on the spot, and then it escalates, um, at the middle and the high school in terms of how directly we handle it. I do think Annie makes a point at the beginning, it's tricky because some of it is very objective, and that violence is wrong, um, but it's also laden with political perspective, and I think we have always been very, um, adamant with teachers that the classroom isn't a place for your personal political, um, perspectives, but rather a conversation about perspective taking. So, I think we have people very capable of handling the conversation, but I think it, it would be very difficult, I think, with younger students, um, in this particular sense. But if there's a parent who wants some assistance, if they want to reach out to the school, I know, um, we can certainly provide them another copy of the document. It's posted on the blog and put it up on social media, um, and, you know, the principals are great resources, and the school psychologists are great resources if kids are feeling traumatized by the violence.
I agree. I, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that this should be discussed with elementary students, I'm, or, or I'm not suggesting anything. I just know that, for instance, it is definitely something that, at the middle school level for sure, kids are discussing amongst themselves. And so, I didn't know, I, I half expected the next day for there to be like a safe space for, for them to kind of unpack some of that in a group and that sort of thing, but it just, that's the way it's functioned.
And some of it could be lost in translation because of the remote.
Totally.
The remote piece where, you know, typically, we, faculty would come in and, and maybe talk about how they want to handle it during the day, where now everybody's somewhat individualized. But, um, no, there is no directive to not engage, and the directions of how to engage have been provided.
Got it. Thank you, I appreciate that.
I asked my senior the next morning, because we, well, watched it together and discussed it, and, you know, he's 18, so I asked my senior the next day, "Did any teachers discuss it? Did you have any discussions during class?" And I was told that I was asking too many questions. So, that's, that's.
I love your kids.
So, do we all?
Um, quick question, well, not a question, a comment. It is disappointing to see the number of people tuned into this budget meeting, um, versus the number of people that tune in to talk about sports. And, um, you know, I think this is one of the reasons that I'm so sometimes belligerent about sports. It's really disappointing because we're here to deliver education, and we need people to tell us what they want, and to see so few people here is disappointing.
Oh, it's, you're the player. Those are the people who are here. So, you need to say that at a different meeting when it's all full of other people.
I'll say it then, too.
And Annie, Annie, I gotta just, I gotta just say, I was, early in my career, I was complaining, because I was doing customer service, and I was complaining to the person responsible for sales that every customer I worked with was complaining about their experience with us, and he said, "Yeah, that's, well, you're in service, you don't see the 95% of customers that are happy." So, to some extent, I think that may be a reflection, some of these budget meetings are a reflection on the fact that it does seem to be a functional budget process, and we have done a good job shepherding things, and frankly, you know, until resources go missing, and we have, as parents come on and say, "Hey, resources are going missing, I don't want to keep cutting back." So, I wouldn't take it as, as disheartening. Look at it as things that, things are going, and there's trust in the school committee to provide the resources and the budget process. Am I being too Pollyanna-ish for you?
Yes, you are definitely too Pollyanna-ish, Ken, just in general, but we, we like you for that.
I like that outlook.
And Annie, we're not really talking about cutting anything yet, we're kind of talking big picture and strategy. Um, and that's kind of my concern. I don't want us to get so deep, so deep into it that we're only getting people on in response to a suggestion we've advanced because we've exhausted all of our options.
That's the only way we ever get anyone to show up. Sorry.
Okay.
We've been here a long time.
I know. So, that's why, if you'd like me to roll out some program, you know, where we think we might have to go if we're forced to the right, we can certainly do that.
Are we able to, I mean, maybe this is going too, maybe this is unnecessary, but, or too high-level, or just not for this, but can, can we paint the picture not only of what it looks like when it goes bad, though, like when we have to cut, 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 but also paint the picture of, and this is what it looks like in five years and in 10 years, when, when we stay the course, and here's how it benefits our partner communities?
That's the strategic.
Okay, so that's what we got to do. Yeah, that's the thing.
Well, and I'll, this is where I'm worn down, and I feel like we build the plan and we set the expectations, but we're still always back here at this exercise of how do we stay afloat? And we don't get to, we rarely get to the build part, which is why I don't want to talk about what programs we might have to cut. I want to, I really want to impress upon people that we have to have, we need a sustainable path, and it's not sustainable to be going up and down every year, just trying to figure out how to cut things around the corners to get to a number that the town has to have, and then one more year defer development of programs.
So, that's.
Or the improvement of services.
Yeah.
That's why we, with our partners, to understand that growth for a school is always going to outstrip that 2.5%. That is what it costs to run a school. That is why we keep having those conversations with our partners, and I think they're almost understanding it, or at least they were before COVID.
You know, and ideals for us, for schools, would be to say, "Okay, you're, we'll allow you 3.4 in operation growth per year, and we'll, and we agree to another 2.5% for growth and investment." Then we can give you a multi-year plan on how to build something out. Otherwise, we build, I, we, we build a vision for the future, but there's really no, the financial plan is still year to year, because there's no commitment to the, to what we will, what we'll get in revenue, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
Chicken and the egg, because then the towns have to come up with the funds to do that, and in order to do that, they have to expand their growth, and they have to expand things like 40B, and then that puts more pressure on all of the schools and all of the resources in the town, so it's like a chicken and the egg thing. So, you know, cat chasing its tail. I'm all full of metaphors tonight, but point is.
We were able to experience, not to belabor this, but we were able to experience our, our greatest periods of growth when we were able to reorganize and make internal cuts, and then move those dollars into program investments. But because the cuts have turned into managing the budget and the annual assessment, we've run out of opportunities to reinvest in ourselves. So, all of those cuts, uh, all of those attrition cuts were, were part of an investment in math specialists, or, uh, reorganizing how the reading specialists are structured, and maybe having some be coaches and some be interventionists. There was a plan to invest in interventionists at, at the middle school. So, there's been ideas, there's been visions, there's been plans laid out, but then the resources to implement them dry up. Because we're, we are a people business, most of our program development is going to require some level of staffing.
But, you know, one of the things we haven't done is what you do in the private sector, which is to build out a business proposal and to say, you know, "Here's the vision, here's what we want to do, here's the cost, here's the value of that, um, investment." And, you know, we have never trotted out, um, something like a campaign that says, "This is what we want to do," and I'm not saying this is your work, it's, it's our work with you to kind of build the case. Um, you know, when I want to do something at work, I have to build a, build a business proposal that says this is why this is worth the investment and what we're going to get back on it. And I don't think we've been very good, and I'm not saying that's you, I'm saying that as a committee, we've not been very good about making our case to the community to say, "Invest in us, this is going to be worth it."
That's a much better way of saying what I was trying to say, which is paint the picture of where this goes if we go stay the course with the programming. Thank you, Annie.
Did I repeat myself, Ken?
Nope.
I have a call. Are we, um, we've talked about this a lot, and I feel like we're all pretty much on the same page. Do, does anybody else want to add? Or would I need to move to adjourned meeting?
Move to adjourned.
Do you have a second?
I'll second Shannon.
All right, Erin?
Shannon.
Uh, Annie?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Good night, everybody. Thank you for coming.